So, it will also, like, some people really have a hard time making friends. And then, like, bullying will, like, lower their self-esteem. They'll be, they'll start thinking, like, "Oh, I can't make friends." Or, like, um, some kids will fully to boost their own self-esteem.
So, our bench is designed to create strong friendships that will last for a while. And it's a safe place for people to go to make friends who are either lonely and they just are shy and they don't want to ask someone to be their friend. And anyone's welcome to sit down on the bench and say, "Hey, would you like to be my friend?" And then you can hang out for the rest of the time that you're outside. And, um, you can invite them to play with you, too.
So, our goal is to create an environment where kids can feel safe to come to the school and they know that, um, there's people there who are going to care for them. And like, if they know that if they need a friend, they have a place to go. And, like, to show people, like, "I'm alone right now, but if you want, um, can I play with you?" Like, it's just like, they can make new friends. Like, if someone is seeing, like, if someone sees them sitting on the bench, they can go over and they can say, like, "Hi, my name is whatever." And they can become, like, they can make like the lasting friendship.
Our donors, um, they donated supplies to us so we could build this bench. And, um, we got our paint from Robinsons. Ingravables made us a plaque that says that we built this bench. Uh, National Umbre donated some primer and, uh, brushes so that we could paint it. And Lowe's donated some nuts and bolts, as well as central mass powder coating. Powder coated our frame that will hold the bench together.
And, um, since we got all these donations, the bench is completely free, so there is no cost. Um, so do you guys have any questions? Anything you'd like, yeah?
How did you get the idea for the buddy bench?
Well, we've heard of it, um, in some places, like, other schools have, some of them. And we just thought it was like a really good idea because it does help, um, kids, like, gain friendships.
What was the biggest challenge you had to overcome to get this accomplished?
I think getting the donations, because some people would give someone one day and then we'd have to run around and try to find the other ones.
We did have a delay, so wood came in a little late, so we had to try to work around that. Um, but we did, we had other things that we were working on instead. So while we were waiting for the wood, we, um, we worked on, like, our presentation and, like, what we were gonna say.
And we also got the paint donations.
Did you have a template to go by to make the bench? Or how did that, how did you decide on the, on the specs of the bench?
For our bronze award, we made a bench for the First Federated Church in Hudson. And we went by that template to make this bench.
The, in the materials, I think we saw it look like it's gonna be colorful.
Yes, it is. It's a rainbow and it has, um, writing on it. It'll say, like, "See you friend" on it.
I'd like to compliment you on this entire project. It was a terrific idea. You've clearly worked through some problems. You've come up with a really good product. And you did a nice presentation. Your PowerPoint was very informative. So you ought to be congratulated. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Thank you. What we would actually like to do is, um, when there's a donation, like this, you know, the Berlin School Committee, we'd actually be like to just vote to accept the donation or acknowledge that you accept the donation.
So do we have a motion for one of the members?
Um, yes, I make a motion to re-accept the donation of the bench.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
No, you're not Berlin.
I'm sorry.
Edward, would you like to second it?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? All of those in favor? Aye. Thank you, girls. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very nice. And I have to say, I am so impressed, as a former Girl Scout, I am so impressed by your vest and all of those awards that you have received. Can you just turn around? I want to just see. Look at those. That is just amazing. That is a lot of dedication to being Brownies and Girl Scouts and Cadets. Nice work, girls. Very nice.
I think that's three years worth of badges, that's all.
Wow. That's amazing.
And they sewed them all themselves. I think they'll just say...
I promise I did not have that many patches. I think my mother's fingers would have fallen off by the time we're all ready. So, nice work.
Thank you.
Okay, um, there were three people we were gonna recognize tonight. Not one of them is here. So we're going to do a virtual recognition. I do want to acknowledge, um, Grace Pendergast, who was our student member this year. We did get a T-shirt to Johnston, Wales. Um, so we'll be presenting that to her maybe right before graduation. Diane suggested might be a good idea. We very much appreciate her help and she was a great contributor to the committee. We also want to thank Tom Fleming. Um, Tom was on the school committee for three years, one term. Um, and made, really, in that time, made a significant contribution to the group. Tom was a little, he didn't always agree with us. And it's the healthiest thing possible to have people on the committee who don't always agree. He was always respectful and he was always brilliant in what he had to say. So he will be missed. And last but by no means least, um, we actually have purchased a clock that's engraved for Larry Brenner. Larry was on the school committee for many, many years. Ten plus.
At least nine, if not 12 years.
Um, and just a tremendous leader and, you know, was here through many huge projects. The construction of this building, was a member of the building committee. Um, but also has been a tremendous mentor and friend. And he will be very much missed and we appreciate Larry's service. And you've introduced the two new members, so shall we move on to reorganization?
So at this time, I'm gonna announce that the Berlin School Committee identifies a new chair, a new vice chair, and a new secretary for their committee.
Well, I'm wondering if Angela would be willing to be the chair.
Sure.
Excellent. Uh, that's as far as I can imagine.
Do you want me to be the vice chair?
You soon volunteer.
I nominate Cliff to be the vice chair. And I nominate Ed to be the secretary.
So you all have to have motions and seconds and official votes for that. So the first is to nominate Angela as the chair. So we need, I believe Cliff will take George's motion. And then Edward, if you wouldn't mind doing a second, and then you could do an official vote.
Okay.
Can you second the nomination of Angela for chair, Edward?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Angela.
I nominate Cliff for vice chair.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I nominate Ed for secretary?
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, um, next on your appointment for the Berlin School Committee, um, you then appoint a member. Edward typically would be appointed to the regional committees.
So I'd like to nominate Ed to be appointed to the region and Union 16 school committee.
She doesn't require a vote, does she?
It doesn't require a vote, actually. You're, as a chair, you're not.
And now we need Boylston to make their nominations for chair, vice chair, and secretary.
So I nominate, um, Mr. Lozridis to continue as chair of the Boylston Elementary School Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would like to nominate Jim Spencer as the vice chair.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And would like to, um, for a second, I'm just trying to find my little phone. Uh, we do have a motion to appoint, um, Lori as the secretary to the Boylston School Committee.
My name's Lori. Nice to meet you.
Second.
Second? Do we have a second for the documentation? All those in favor? Aye.
Okay, we also need to do...
I would, yes, I would also like to appoint Jim Spencer to the Tahoe School Committee.
Okay. And then you have the region. We need a new chair, vice chair, and secretary. And for those that are new, typically what happens at the region level is one year it is a Berlin member that's the chair, and the next year it is a Boylston member that is the chair. So, um, this past year, we have had Lori as the chair. And Lori, you've done a fabulous job and I want to thank you very much for all of your work and efforts you have done, um, this past year. And all of our chairs, actually, have just done a fabulous job this past year. It's been a great year. Um, but now's the time where we have to think of, um, the new chair, vice chair, and secretary for the region.
I'd like to nominate Cliff as chair of the region.
Second. It's a definite sign.
Yeah, the nominations I take. So there you go.
Oh, I'm supposed to say...
You seconded, right?
I said, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a bumpy ride.
You can see how complex this is. Everybody's looking like, which role?
It's the simple things that get complicated.
It is, it is.
You would think we had, we should have it down.
Applause. The nomination for a vice chair. It's easy for me to say.
I nominate Matt as vice chair.
You do.
Second.
Wow, man. You nominated and seconded it. Now. Okay. Any further discussion?
Lori seconded it.
I seconded it.
All those in favor? Aye. Congratulations, Matt.
Thanks. Looking forward to working with you.
And now we need a secretary.
Yes, we do.
I'm secretary for the elementary.
You're so skilled.
Oh.
Well, what are the duties, what are the duties of secretary? What are the duties of secretary?
Mostly it's signing through the minutes.
I'll do it.
There you go.
He actually made a lot of texts right there.
Hey, we already got him started signing last week, so we're good.
So, Zach, who nominated Jim?
Okay. Did you nominate?
Yes, I nominated.
You seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
So with that said, I do have documents that will be going around. So the new chairs and new secretaries, it is labeled here on the sign here forms. Who needs to sign? So if it says "All Secretaries," you're secretary for a particular school committee. I need you to sign on that line that you represent. So for those who wanted just to recall, Edward, you are the secretary for Berlin. And we have Lori, you are the secretary for Boylston. Jim, you are the secretary for the region. Okay, so we need to sign these. And there are some for chairs as well that you'll need to sign. So I'll just start passing them around. If you could pass them back this way and I'll give them to the last two as they go through. Okay, so see, the first page is done.
Almost.
Oh, no.
Does the chair appoint the treasurer?
Yeah.
Well, then I would like to, um, appoint Joe, you have to tell me how to pronounce it.
Michael Beck.
Michael Beck, uh, to be the Berlin-Boylston School Committee Treasurer. And that's done then, right? It's an appointment. Um, we have to appoint the assistant treasurer. In the past, Matt, you've appointed assistant treasurer to the school committee.
I do, right.
Would you want to continue in that august role?
Sure.
Okay. All right, then Matt, you shall be appointed.
So, um, now, Matt, for the subcommittee assignments, there's an appointment for the Boylston School Committee member and an alternate to approve the payroll. I did announce that the, um, the current members on that, um, are Matt, is Matt, and then the alternate is Lori. So those don't have to change year to year unless somebody feels as if they would have difficulty getting into the school and you might need to get somebody else to come in. That's up to you as members.
I am gonna ask a question on that relative to, when there were processes, a single signature approval.
Right, so it's, right, so it's you. And if you can't, then the alternate currently is Lori.
Okay, so we don't have to have three members signature?
Right, right.
We, um, I get some clarification on that. Is it the, uh, the, they're a little bit ambiguous about having an alternate. And some towns went forward with that and some towns did not. And the town of Athens got guidance from the state that, um, they wouldn't permit an alternate sign. So, uh, it would not, so then you'd have to get the two members of the primary person who could not sign.
Interesting.
So it's a little bit against the sphere of the Municipal Resignation Act, but it kind of creates a little bit of a, it's better than the previous process, but it's not quite what we would hope.
So in this session, would either of you have the opportunity to be available to, was it every two weeks, right? To get up, to sign payroll warrants?
I'm fairly available. I work from home a lot, so.
Okay. So my schedule's gotten a little hairy. So, um, I would like to appoint Jim Spencer as the payroll, I'm keeping that number to, to sign for payroll warrants. And the alternate, I will accept, appoint myself as the alternate, albeit don't know if we have to do it or further work anyways.
Right, we can, if, if, if.
Technically Lori and I are the alternates because by, so we have the both on top.
The other, um, subcommittee is...
So, and just for, you'll get a note generally from Cheryl.
She's already texted me. That's what I had to do last week.
And she's flexible about making sure she's available to get to what you need in order to execute this.
See, that's why.
For record, could I ask that you also approve the payables warrants, not just the payroll warrant?
It is. It's the payroll, payable, and payroll.
Oh, well, yeah, payroll.
Yep, it's the same.
Just a quick question.
Yep.
There's no similar on the payroll?
Right.
And the region?
We just didn't think that there would be more changes.
Okay.
We knew Boylston knows a potential needing to change because of Matt's schedule.
Just curious.
Yeah, that's why we didn't do it. Yep. Um, also, um, for the appointment of the personnel subcommittee, um, currently the members are Matt and Lori. I just want to keep in mind that we will be going into negotiations this upcoming school year for the Boylston Teachers Association. So if you want to appoint now, if you want to stay the same, that's entirely up to you as a committee. Typically, you have two members, um, on the personnel subcommittee for those negotiations. They might not start until January, because that's typically when it starts. But at some point during that school year, at least in the fall, we get notification that they're interested in beginning negotiations. That's just for Boylston.
So I'll ask to review of your interest tonight. I know that that is a comical phrase, your interest and desire. Um, would you both be interested in participating in negotiation this year? Do you feel your schedule would permit an allowed force?
I would be willing to do that.
So I can ask to, both?
Okay.
Jim and Lori? Thank you. I think Jim's list is full.
His list is full.
Yeah, we didn't even get to the region yet. He's already full.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yep.
So will Lori be and Jim an alternate, or?
No, it's two members, two subcommittee members. And it's, it's Jim and Lori.
Okay, so for the region, um, we need to appoint a subcommittee for payroll and payable warrants. The current members are myself, Matt, and Angela. And we need three? Okay, is there anyone who's on that list who does not want to be on this list?
I don't do anything here, right?
No.
I'll stay on this.
Okay. Then I shall appoint Matt and...
Those warrants are the same, right, as the top? Right, they are, right, yeah.
Yep.
Doesn't make sense when we have Jim.
You want Jim?
I don't want to go up there anyway.
He's going to go there to sign them anyway, so it makes, makes sense. Okay, Jim?
Sign me up.
Jim has a lot in me.
It's not a lot, I promise.
That's what he says. Okay, um, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we have to appoint a region policy subcommittee. The current members are Tom Fleming and Larry Brenner. Of course, neither of them will be able to be on that committee. So we need two, um, regional school committee members to be appointed. One for each town. Do we have anybody who would like to volunteer?
Do you think Edward would be interested?
Edward, would you be, would you be interested, Edward, in being on the region policy subcommittee?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, great. That's the problem. Boylston? I'm gonna ask this question, just how often is the committee together?
So it varies, um, each year. It depends on how frequent and how significantly, um, the policies are changing. We did a lot of policy changes this past year. So this upcoming year, I don't see too many. However, there are some that we do have to review and revise before, um, September so that we at least have another place. So I'm thinking, like, somewhere at the end of June, or middle of end of June, we will be scheduling a policy subcommittee meeting so that we can get those done before the end of the school year. Typically what happens, um, for our new members, the policy subcommittee will look at the policy, review the language together, will meet. The policy subcommittees will, um, make a determination and a recommendation to bring to the full committee. If it's a new policy, it comes forward to the committee as a first read, and then the next meeting, it gets voted. If it's a policy we've already had in place and there were revisions, we just put it in as a consent agenda typically and just, we expect that the school committee members are gonna read that prior to the meeting and ready for approval. So, um, I'm thinking we'll probably have one meeting at some point in June. Uh, we have a couple of things that we need to, um, get together, especially with our special education. Some of the laws and so forth that have come up, some of the policies we need to get going. And rates, I know we're looking at the rates here at Tahoe, rental rates. So some of those things will be revisiting in June. But other than that, probably, probably, uh, we have one policy that we prime at three times on, that one particular policy, and then others, like, we have seven policies. We might just go right through seven policies like that in one meeting. Um, so it really, they're really, we didn't really meet that much. We didn't get through a lot of policies in one meeting.
Is this particular subcommittee meeting one that gets scheduled based on availability of the two, of the two people, so it's?
Right.
Or is it something that, you know?
Yep, so what happens is, is usually we'll look at my schedule, we'll pick some dates and times on the schedule. There have been, not necessarily the policy subcommittee, but other subcommittees we might meet during the day cannot have an evening meeting. Um, some of them we meet at night. It really depends on what the subcommittee's availability is.
My personal interest would be more aligned with, I didn't see. You know, not to say necessarily one day, not that I have to be in this room, but if I was to select myself or appoint you.
I don't, I don't mind doing policy subcommittee.
Point, Jim.
To be honest, most of the stuff you've pointed me to is just signing things so far, so.
Okay, so Edward and Jim will be appointed to the region policy subcommittee. Thank you, gentlemen. And now we need to appoint a member to the building committee to replace Larry Brenner and Matt. You've just indicated interest.
Sure.
Is there anyone who wants to argue with Matt about that? Okay, consider yourself appointed.
Great.
And we need to appoint Bob. Yes, and do I just do that by the way for Matthew Moore?
Yes, you can just appoint Bob. And what it is, Julie Suprenaut was the last director of finance that was actually a voting member on the building committee. Bob has been there and he's actually been, actually there, but he's not a voting member. So it doesn't count as a form. Um, we have Bob there, so.
Well, I would be glad to appoint you that.
Glad to have a book.
All right. And so the payroll and payable warrants are going around.
Now, um...
There we go, Berlin.
Right, Jim and Ed, this gets a little bit crazy because we have consent agendas and all three school committees have to individually vote the consent agenda that goes around. On this particular, um, section, I would just ask that both of you just listen for tonight's meeting because you weren't members of the previous, um, minutes. So it wouldn't make sense of you to vote to approve because you weren't in attendance. So I'll just ask that you just abstain from, from the vote on, for this evening.
So for Berlin, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all those who abstain?
You abstain.
Oh, abstain, sorry.
Well, no, you don't abstain.
You're too much instruction. Everybody wants to be in Berlin. It took me like four meetings.
You're abstaining. Jim is not abstaining. Until we get the board, you did it right. We're just laughing.
So I have a motion to approve the Boylston School Committee agenda.
So move.
I will kick personally second. Are there questions or discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Who's abstaining?
Abstain, aye.
Abstain, Jim. Thank you. And for the Berlin-Boylston Regional and Union 16 School Committee, do I have a motion?
So move.
I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. And?
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions.
This is exhausting.
So communication is the next item on our agenda and it appears we have no communication.
None.
Okay, I keep forgetting I'm in charge here. I keep waiting for Lori. Okay, so, um, onto the reports section.
Wait, you have petitions?
Oh, sorry, I skipped over a piece. Do we have any petitions or audiences related to items on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the reports. Is someone reporting any Grace's absence?
Now, quite a bit of the, um, information that she probably would have spoken about will be in.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any, ah, there you are.
I'm Jessica Nelson, reporting for CPAC. And we're moving pretty rapidly towards all of our end-of-year events right now. Tomorrow night, we actually have a meeting that Molly Lancherlyer from VMS is going to be presenting at. She'll be talking about the anatomy and development of the period. She'll be talking about the anatomy and development of the hearing process. And we're all really looking forward, she's a great presenter, so we'd like anyone who wants to attend to that. And she's graciously already agreed to give another presentation next year on a different topic, so we're thrilled. And tomorrow night, we also are picking our scholarship winner. CPAC doesn't do a lot of fundraising, but the bulk of what money we do fundraise for goes every year into scholarship to graduate and senior. And, excuse me, the rest goes to things like National Schools Week. And same way into scholarship and fundraising. We're in the middle of the fundraiser. We all hate fundraising, so if anyone who needs sheets, we have one week left on our fundraiser.
They're great sheets.
Needs to replenish the scholarship fund for next year. So we have information on our website and also on our Facebook page about that. And it's May 31st. Our board members, Angela O'Reden and Carrie LaValle, have been promoting CPAC and discussing what we've been up to here on the Boyleson Cable Access Channel. And we're all thrilled that they stepped up to do that and we're grateful that the Cable Access Channel invited us. It's been an awfully good experience. And the last, there's a few more, sorry. We're hoping to organize another Meet the Experts Night for September 20th in the fall. The teachers were fantastic last year coming to participate in and it was a wonderful opportunity that we wish more families had taken advantage of. So we're hoping to have a bit more lead time to promote it because they really offer a lot of information and allow their time to anyone who has questions about what they do. And let's see, in April, we had a joint presentation and meeting with the West Boyleson CPAC to talk about effective communication and the IDP. And then the last thing I have to tell you is normally you'd be getting the list of excellent educator awards, but we haven't given them to the BMS and Tohonto teachers yet. That'll be at their June staff meetings. So after that, we'll provide the list. But we're very happy that there were nominees for all schools this year. And we're thrilled to be able to give it to CPAC.
Thank you, Jessica.
Where's your meeting tomorrow night? Is it in this room?
It's at BMS.
Oh, BMS.
It'll be in Jill Walton's classroom so that we can use the audio system whose name I cannot recall.
Sound field.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, Berlin Link.
Hi. So Suzanne wasn't feeling well today. So she knew that I was actually already coming because I had a little something I was going to say to Tom. I thought Tom's going to be here tonight. And we just, as parents, really wanted to thank him for all the years of service that he gave to the students in Berlin. He did a great job and we just really appreciate it. So Suzanne did send me some information she wanted me to share. She wanted me to talk about the field trips. Basically, Link fields all the transportation for field trips for every grade at Berlin Memorial, except for the fifth grade. The Berlin Police and the Dare program takes care of that one. We funded a nature's classroom, put the Hands on Nature's program for Mrs. Woodward's class. They're going to fund a giant slide activity for Field Day. We had, on May 31st, we have the Global Earth Coming, which is another event that was tied in with the Sky Dome Planetarium that we also had in the gym. And that was, the kids really seemed to enjoy that. On June 14th, fidelity is coming in for a STEM event. The kids are going to be broken into groups according to their grades. And they're going to do activities like Little Bits, Spheros, Olly's, Golden Blocks, Canos. I'm not sure if I said that one right. And they're also going to make use of the Makerspace and do the Squishy Circuits, Osmos, the Makey Makey in the deconstruction area. We had the May 4th Elementary STEM Night was here and we did the snacks and the refreshments. We also had a family dance on May 12th, which had a huge turnout. Gets bigger and bigger every year. People want to dance. And that's about it. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
No, that's a, that's a great list.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really amazing. Thank you for all the work.
I will say that Val actually was one of the people here on STEM Night on May 4th, helping with all the little Makey Makeys and getting the kids going. So she actually had the display from there, so thanks for her.
It was a lot of fun. Yeah, it was a great, great turnout.
Thanks for all of your efforts, too.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Do we have a Boyleson PTO representative this evening? Okay. Does anyone want to report in absentia?
I can just say, you know, the most recent thing what's going on right now is we have Race for Education planned for Thursday. We're monitoring the weather very closely. Traditionally, we've held it outside on the fields. So we're watching it, but we do have alternate plans. And I know that the PTO just shared it out via social media and part prints today that in the event that it does rain, we will still host it, we'll just do it indoors. It'll be fun, we got plans.
I'm sure you do.
I already have a child planning there.
They're using the Berlin weather book to watch the weather.
I'm sure that they are. The most accurate forecast.
Awesome. Do we have a representative from the Tohonto PTO who wants to?
Stacy.
I was hoping Sandra was going to be here so I wouldn't get tossed into the fire here.
Stacy, are we seeing like the five?
It's the camera.
My name's Stacy O'Neill and I have two sixth graders and a returning student from Aspet. She'll be a sophomore. So I'm stepping into Sandra's seat. And a few other parents have joined the committee as well. And I'm sure I'll be meeting them one morning. I guess I can tell you, we've been busy with staff appreciation, also the high school ice cream social, and we're working on Middle School Field Day right now, which is scheduled for June 19th. And last week, we went over all the applications for the scholarships and we awarded four. And it worked out great, two for Boyleson and two for Berlin. So we'll be handing those out at graduation. And I think that's about it. So let me know, or I can of course talk to Sandra about if there's a standard kind of report that you expect from PTO or are you just looking for general information or things that we've been working on?
Thank you very much, Stacy.
Thanks for stepping up. And Stacy, that is typically what we do, is any of the upcoming events, anything that's happened, you want to share that you haven't shared. Great, it's a typical format, thank you.
You bet.
Yay, superintendent Dexter, oops. Sorry, Lori.
I just wondered if I could just make an observation because Stacy brought up something that I wanted to comment on. It sounds like you said you have a student returning from Aspet and coming back to Tohonto.
Yep.
I have, we have five children, young adult teenagers that we're aware of, who are coming back to Tohonto from St. John's, from Aspet, and from other private schools. So I think that's a testament to the work that Tohonto's doing.
Absolutely.
And that the grass isn't always greener.
That's my report. So I'll start first with the town meeting updates. Both of our towns passed all of our proposed budgets for FY 18. So we are actually very pleased to continuously observe the support from both of our communities regarding our budgets. And we are also grateful for their willingness to work with us throughout this, the challenging times. We start typically, for those who don't realize, we actually start in October for the following August budget. So it's a long process and I really appreciate that they have really heard where our budgetary concerns are. The finance committees in both towns, the selectmen in both towns, we work a lot with them and it's been great to see the success at the end. And it's a big, the day after, we all can say, it all passed. So we appreciate that very much, everybody. Also, our anticipated last day of school this year is June 23rd. We had a little challenging times on some of our snow day calls this year. And I also want to appreciate, send my appreciation to all of the unions, actually. Because during one potential snow day, I was texting with them and we were finding solutions because one snow day was actually a half day and it was a half day PD. And I said, I can't do a two-hour delay and then there half day. So we really kind of talked it through, the unions and I, all that whole snow days. We were trying to strategize how we could make it work because we definitely didn't want to try to, if we had that snow day, we'd be talking about Monday as the last day and that's not the case. So I really appreciate everybody's efforts this year and collaboration with that. So it is a Friday and I do want to point out that although the last day is on a Friday, attendance does count on that last day. And it's important that we have our students in that building, in their respective classes. And there's a lot of excitement on that last day, but it's also very important that we see them here. Also, what we do have is our graduations Sunday, June 4th. And I know Diane didn't pass out invitations to all of you, so please let the office secretaries know if you will be able to attend. You do have a special, an assignment to reserve seats at graduations. We like to make sure that we're reserving the right amount of seats for everybody. But, and the school committee chairperson hands the diplomas to our graduates at the ceremony. So it's nice to have you all there. Updates on public education, I stated that I'd like to, no pressure, but you know.
It's actually fun.
Is the last day a full or half to the record?
Half day. So the updates on public education, I started doing this a couple of months ago on a couple of different things. And you know, way to begin, I can go extremely wide as federal, I can keep it as state and local. So I tried to keep it a little bit, you know, more on the budgetary idea. The Senate is actually hoping to pass its fiscal budget. They met this morning, they were supposed to start at 10:30 this morning on some of their final numbers. We're hoping to get by the end of the week this week. But there has been, another topic is, you've heard a lot about water in the school systems and safe water in schools. I would just like to say that they actually are trying to get more strict legislation in the state of Massachusetts on that topic of water. But we actually probably want to state that we do have our water tested regularly in our schools while within the regulations and the requirements of the state. So DESE has also released some revised ELA and math standards, of which we have recently been notifying the teachers and working with the teachers on that so they can continuously revise anything that they need to do for that. Social Studies Framework, as you know, I have been a part of the Massachusetts Department of Education Civics Task Force. We just gave our presentation to the commissioner. There were two practitioners, myself and Alan from Brandeis University. The two of us spoke with the Department of Education representatives to the commissioner about our findings. And the hope is that they will have a draft of the Social Studies Framework by February of next year of 18 to the Department of Education for public review and for public comments. So this year, they did the, it's the same, similar protocol that they did this year for ELA and math. They get approved from the Department of Ed as a draft. They had it on the website and they waited for public participation. We kept sending it to our staff as well pretty regularly and asking public participation on feedback. They'll do the same here with the Department of Ed's Social Studies Framework as well. And the hope is that they'll get the public participation feedback and will be able to implement it in the fall of 2018 is what we're hoping to see to start with those revisions. That's their timeline. And also, the Attorney General's Office, you should have had in your packet, the Attorney General's Office gave districts updated guidance on healthcare providers and for public schools in regards to immigration. I can state that we currently do not have any immigrants in our schools that this would actually, we would have to actually refer to. But we do have it on record and on file, should we need to make any changes or provisions or anything like that, we have their guidance from the Attorney General. So that's it for my reports.
Any questions from committee members? Okay. Mr. Campbell, you're next up.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks, we just take a couple of minutes of your time, I know we got a lot of the agenda. Busy time of year at school, as everybody will probably say tonight. We have finished fabulous MCAS testing for the year. I am pleased to report that you can't really look at what they're writing or what the questions are. There's all kinds of rules. I will tell you however that, I saw a lot of purposefulness in our youngsters taking their little standardized test this year. And it was good to see the focus. I have no idea how it will all turn out. I always have very positive feelings. We'll see what happens, but good signs. I was proud of the kids. I had a talk with all of them as we started the process. I said, "Your best job, your best effort, that's all we're asking. The score doesn't matter, what you do is do your best." They seem to take that to heart. We're all looking forward to the Connects program, but I'm going to defer to my colleague in crime to talk a little bit about that because it's apparent in his town that kind of brought that forward. I will point out that this Thursday, please, please come, is the annual Notathon and art show at school. Doors open at 6:00, the Notathon starts at 7:00. It's a big fundraiser for our link parent group, so you are all more than welcome to attend that. And for those of you who do not attend the Memorial Day program at school on Memorial Day, we have our Memorial Day program Tuesday, May 30th at 9:30. That's what I got.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Thompson.
John left me with things to say, this is great. I was a little worried that I wasn't having enough. Similarly, we have wrapped up MCAS 2.0 and I just want to ditto Mr. Campbell's remarks. Our kids worked really, really hard. We tried to send them a similar effort about, or similar message about effort. And I can tell you, they worked really hard. I have several kids that, it's an on-time task, so they can take as long as they want. And we had some kids that took an awful long time. It wasn't because it was difficult for them, it was because they were really conscientious about what their product looked like. So I'm anxiously awaiting the results from it because I feel like there's a lot of good things to share based on that. Since our last meeting, one of the other things that we've done as a school is focusing on our wellness policy. We created a Screens Free Week. It was actually brought by a community member, the idea. We did work with Karen Barber over at the Rec Department and Tara Koziac and Brianna Pasquale, two of our teachers really spearheaded the effort. We tried to provide kids with different activities to do over the course of the week and to stay off the screens for entertainment purposes. We all use screens for work, to learn, but you know, can we limit it in some ways? So we challenged the kids to go home and find other things to do. Overall, we came back with 107 kids that met the challenge for all five days. Roughly 40%, far more than I expected, was Boston Celtics playoff week, so. It was a big success, we look forward to doing it in the future. I couldn't watch the games because you knew the kids were going to ask me the next day. And parents would drive by and say, "You missed a heck of a game."
Who would do that?
I don't know.
Who would do such a thing?
No way. The other thing is, thank you, John, for allowing me to talk about it. We have a really fun opportunity, thanks to Mike Reel and Thermo Fisher Scientific. He works for a company that promotes, well, they own Connects. So what they've done is they've challenged our fifth graders to come up with a solution to a problem. How do you pick up garbage from the bottom of the ocean using Connects? Simulated ocean, they're going to come off of the table and we have groups of three and four students working together to solve that problem and build something. They have to build and create blueprints, they have to be able to deconstruct it and reconstruct the day of the event. And we will be hosting an event over in Boyleson with Berlin in attendance where all the kids will have an opportunity to present their creations and their solutions to the problems. It's really exciting and the kids are already having a blast with it, so.
And Mr. Thompson's big go-saw lunch. Finding some.
Don't put that on the nose. You didn't get that, right? Finally, kindergarten registration, we are up to 32 students and there's rumblings that there might be three more out there, but I'm waiting to get that big work in before I report on that. Similarly, everyone's invited to our Memorial Day program. It's May 26th, at 2:00. So any veterans out there too, please let the school know. We'd love to have you there and we'd love to recognize you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Diane.
May is the month of many tests, assessments. We have finished up our AP testing, as well as our MCAS paper-based testing, which includes the eighth grade in Science, Technology, and Engineering, and the 10th grade math assessment is still paper-based. Tomorrow, we finish up all MCAS computer-based in grades six, seven, and eight as well. So there were a couple of days during the month of May where we had AP testing, MCAS paper-based, and MCAS computer-based, all on the same day. So it was quite a scene here. That's a hot town.
Quiet, thanks.
Very quiet. We will have our end-of-the-year DDMs, as well as teachers will give students end-of-year surveys, as well as our final exams for grades nine through 12. Seniors started their final exams today, their last day of classes was yesterday. I do have to say, and I'd like to give thanks to the senior class because of their attendance over this past week. Not only with yesterday being the last day of school, but also with the state senior skip day being announced. We did not have any senior students accounted for, so.
And I want to thank you for not skipping, Diane.
Thank you. If they had, I would have had to have gone with them to chaperone them, to call it an official day off, but we were all here. Next week really brings in our, probably our busiest week of the school year with our senior week. We begin on Tuesday with our annual senior breakfast, our graduation practice, baccalaureate, which occurs at St. Mary's of the Hills on Tuesday evening at 7:00. Wednesday is the senior class trip to the Brownstone Adventure Park in Connecticut. Thursday is our athletic awards assembly from 6:00 to 9:00. Friday is our senior parent dinner at the Manor in West Boylston at 7:00 p.m. And then our culminating event is graduation on Sunday, June 4th at 2:00 p.m. in the gymnasium. NIASC, our NIASC update, I am pleased to announce that we received our letter. We will be re-accredited. So I'd like to thank and congratulate all the students, the faculty, the staff, central office, and the community as a whole. Our letter was shared with the school committee. Our final report has not been released yet, however. But I am pleased to report that we have, probably since I have been here over the past 20 some-odd years, we probably received the most commendations that we have ever received. So we have some areas that they would like to see us report on, but nothing near any of the previous, you know, two reports over the past 20 some-odd years. Nowhere near the need of recommendations that we have had in the past. So I'd like to applaud the whole Tohonto community for that as well. I'm going to update on some things that, if Grace were here, I'm sure she would update on. So the first one is last Thursday, Student Council, High School Student Council in conjunction with administration. We did an afternoon in which we named it Code Phrase When Stags Fly. What we had done is, we had a fire drill. And the staff was instructed to bring all of the high school students into the auditorium after the fire drill. And Student Council had planned sort of an impromptu field day for all of the high school kids because it's been, you know, there's been a lot of stress, a lot of anxiety. You know, we're coming into finals and seniors' last day. So we had great weather, and they organized, kids could play can jam, they could play, you know, frisbee, football, water balloons. The PTO, we timed it so that their ice cream social was that day as well. Or the kids could just hang out and relax and socialize with their friends that afternoon. So that was Thursday. So I think it was very well-received. I got probably the biggest applause when I announced that classes were canceled for the remainder of the day. So that was nice. As well as the athletic update, our baseball team clinched the league championship. They still remain undefeated this week, however, they have four games this week due to makeups because of rain last week. So both baseball and softball have four games this week as well. Track, pleased to announce that Carley Smith qualified for the state track meet in the pentathlon. And then last Friday, finally, we had our prom. Approximately 150 students attended the prom at Fruitland Museum in Harvard. And it was a gorgeous night, absolutely beautiful prom, probably one of the best proms that I've been to out of many proms. It was, you know, it was just, it was beautiful. The kids were well-behaved, as usual, and we had a fabulous evening.
Great. What a nice setting.
Oh, it was, they, everybody watched the sunset. It was absolutely beautiful.
You could see them all out there with their cameras taking pictures of the sunset.
It was just, it was gorgeous, gorgeous backdrop.
What a beautiful place. And the catering, it was catered by a different company.
Yeah, it was, it was just, everything was beautiful.
Thank you, Diane, not only for your report, but for your leadership.
Thank you.
Angela, as the chair of the school committee, is in business. So we need to approve a student teacher who will be working mentored by Mrs. Viz Ronn. So do I have a motion to approve the student teacher?
I'll make the motion to approve the student teacher.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Sounds pretty straightforward.
She's there September to December, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have, we need to approve the Reed Tyler Scholarship recipients. Cliff and Tom served on a subcommittee with Maureen Norberg and Carol Young. And... I guess, a motion to, I guess I would like a motion to approve the recommended scholarships for the Moses Reed Tyler.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
If it's helpful to the committee. I inherited this from Tom, who really did a terrific job with it for all the time he was in charge of it. And he gave me terrific guidance. It was a very simple process, was very efficient, as you would expect Tom to organize. And the committee discussed how to disseminate the funds and agreed on the process they used in the past of a three-tier system. And so we used the same approach this year.
No, I think it's a great, it's just great to see that $15,800 is being disseminated for scholarships for our seniors this year. I think that's just, that's commendable for our small, you know, this, I've seen this since I've been here, the last five years, and to just see each year how much money we're able to give to our Berlin students is just, I just think it's great.
I need to correct you, they're not all seniors.
Oh, that's true.
Most of them, majority of them are already in college.
That's right.
They may be freshmen, sophomores, juniors, or postgraduate. So there's a variety.
It's just amazing.
So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Angela, as the chair, could you just get approval from the, us, the committee to add to the agenda, which is the approval of the Delsh Williams. Should be on the updated agenda for the attorney funding Moses Reed Tyler trust.
Yes, do you mean, you mean?
Does she need a motion?
Right. All right, so every year, also with the Moses Reed, it's handled by a trust fund, and every year they send the school committee an annual report and sort of like a, I guess, an annual report. And we just need their vote to approve that probate account for the trust with Moses Reed Tyler.
Right, just to clarify, it was in Delsh Williams, that was our former attorney. This is with Bada Chendui.
I will make the motion that we approve for the Bada Chendui, what is it, annual report? To retire and trust.
It's an annual probate account.
Annual prob, yeah, whatever that, what she just said.
Do I have a second? Because I'll second, oh, you're in second, thank you. Any questions about this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a student handbook, it's just a first read. I've just got a question about that. Were there any highlighted changes or anything from any of them doing this?
More updates based on policy changes. It's kind of a lawyer-driven document.
Oh. Does anyone have any questions for John on the first read of the handbook?
No, the only thing I just wanted to say, Angela, on all three handbooks, this year, we are going through our coordinated program review through special education. So these handbooks have been reviewed with a fine-tooth comb to make sure all of our policies are updated. Anything that's formatted that might have been off-format has been all changed, corrected, and fixed. I think everybody is probably, at this point, sick of looking at these and could probably read them, just read them to you, like, because I think everybody's really taken a lot of effort in all the schools this year, and all of them, more so, I think, even in our previous years. And we've done it in the previous years, but this year was really, we're going to make sure we're submitting these all to the department event, but we have everything exactly the way they need to be. So I would very...
I would like to make an observation, because when I, trust me, I didn't read every word. As I skimmed through them, you know, having seen school handbooks many times, I was very, I was struck by the professionalism and thoroughness of each of the presentations, each of the handbooks. I thought that was really terrific. And there's just one correction about the Berlin handbook. My name was misspelled.
That's Cheryl. Consider it corrected.
But you won't know what to correct. Reports, two words, P is capitalized. And that is, you're not the first person who's made that mistake.
We'll vote on that next time, and we already voted, the bench.
Correct.
So following, after Angela, we have a first read on our handbook. Any initial comments, thoughts?
I didn't check the spelling of my name.
And L-A-U-R-I-E?
No.
Just as a, it is actually, her first name is L-O-M-A-R.
Is it really wrong?
You're always copying.
They got loseritis right, though.
It's empowering, the kid.
You have to add Jim to that.
Yeah, Jim to it and then me as the chair, but that's, other than that, same thing. My comments sort of echoed theirs, I didn't read all the words of it. I know it's very thorough. Are there specific columns or highlights that we should focus some attention towards?
No, not at all. You know, it was a lot of, you know, really fine-toothed work.
That's all, it's just a first read, so there's no vote. Just a number of comments.
Thank you. Cliff, we're back to the region.
Yes.
And page three.
Yeah, well, we have to, yeah, so it's, we're looking at an out-of-state field trip. Is that correct?
Yes.
Am I on the right spot in the agenda?
You are.
Which is four pages long. Did I say that? So this is an educational field trip application to go to Brownstone Park? Do I have a motion, questions, or, how about a motion?
So. Second.
Second.
Actually, add second.
Okay, second. Is there any discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like me to, Cliff, to talk about this?
Yeah, I would really appreciate you talking about this.
So we have a request from one of our students from our sister school in Shanghai to attend here in the fall. In order for this individual to attend, currently, he is in seventh grade, and he has, Diane and I have seen his transcripts, we've had the transcripts sent over here. He is a high performer in the seventh grade. We did not open any school choice openings for next year's eighth grade or seventh grade for next year. And in review and having discussion, Diane and I are comfortable to propose that we allow him to come into our ninth grade class for next year's school. If he does come in, we are, there would be a condition that he is going to stay for one year and that he would have the visa that actually specifically states that he's allowed to attend public school for one year. So it's not necessarily an exchange student, it's a tuition-in student. And the school committee has a right and authorization to put together a tuition fee for this individual student. That fee would then go into a revolving account, and it would actually help to offset our students who would like to go to other, you know, we have accounts and student accounts that actually can help to support students that maybe if there's a field trip, or there's different things, different events that happen, or travel events, or whatever, and the families can't afford. We always have some type of a sliding scale or something that we can help to offset, and so this will actually help to do that. So our per pupil expenditure is just under $15,000. And my recommendation to the school committee would be to allow the student to come in, tuition-in, and for a cost of $15,000 tuition cost. We have a family member also from Shanghai in which this student would be living with for the year, and that was a personal arrangement, not something that's arranged through the school. Diane, did I miss anything on that at all? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but you and I had that meeting.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
I think I'm pretty much spot-on. We did talk to Ross Dupre about how we go about doing this, our attorney, to get some legal advice. There are different ways that people have done this in the past, whether it was through a federal, if it was through the federal government, and it's through the federal for immigration. It's a totally different process, which we had actually entertained five years ago when I first got here. That's an expensive process, it's a very laborious process, and that takes about a year, year and a half to actually get approval for that. And we did go through that initially. However, by doing, by asking and requesting that this individual actually has on the visa stating that he's allowed to attend public education for one year, we don't have to go through that process. So I would recommend, if you're okay with doing this and the suggestion that Diane and I have, I would state, I move to accept, and his name is Zaiyan Yang, as a ninth-grade student at Tohonto for the FY18 school year. for the FY18 school year, provided he has the appropriate visa allowing him to attend a public school for one year with a tuition cost of fifteen thousand dollars, that would be my recommendation.
And he's taking a school choice spot for ninth grade?
Well, that was.
So, it's not so much that he's taking a school choice spot for ninth grade, we have, um, we have allowed school choice in ninth grade, however, right? And that's why we felt that that size, that grade was, um, would allow the access, and we wanted to see his, um, credentials first, to see if it's something that we felt he would qualify for, um, and we do.
And there's no concerns around additional school choice requests for ninth grade? Numbers wise, no?
No. Ed, did you have a question?
Yeah, you said he was not an exchange student.
That's right.
He'd be a, just a guest of the school.
That's correct, tuition-in student.
Okay.
Yep.
And just wondering what, again, cause I'm not familiar with having done this, and what the process is, but what sort of, the legality, the, the guarantees, is there any sort of, pays a tuition, or how is that sort of, is there a contract that they sign in order to allow, because, you know, cap which or something happens, is there a bailout or something that they're allowed to?
Yep, so we would put together a contract with the attorney, exactly just as you said, and, um, they would have to sign that contract.
Code of conduct, isn't everyone sure that all law?
Right, and, and he has to sign the student handbook, just like every other student, but this is the expectation, and the expectation of our school, behavior of our school, it's the same, same policy, same discipline, same consequences in America, and he has to go by our rules.
Is there any previous experience, history of these type, or is this the first time?
So, here at Tejado, we've had exchange students.
Many exchange students.
Many exchanges, not.
Usually one, one to two a year.
Usually one to two a year.
Um, right, and, but, so not so much under this type of visa, um, but this is the new requirements for immigration.
So it's gonna be like an exchange student, but just the legalities of it, we're not wording this, okay?
Right.
Yep.
Right, and it's tuition-in.
Cool.
So I just wanna go back to kind of the talk about the, um, slots we opened up for choice, and someone had mentioned that students were returning back to our school, so I know it's only one additional student, but I wanna confirm that you don't feel like the ninth grade class is gonna be too big?
No, the students that are returning back are sophomores or juniors, who have gone to, chosen to go, to go to another school their freshman year, and now are coming back.
Okay, and the numbers you projected, that were leaving our district and not going into ninth grade next year are accurate.
Pretty accurate, yep.
Yeah, yeah, and just to let you know why we said no to the seventh and eighth grade the next year, is we have well over ninety students in each of those grades, but the eighth grade, we are anticipating eighty or less at this point.
Correct.
So we're comfortable with that, thank you.
Does anyone have any further questions? Should I reread the motion?
Sure.
That means I'm making the motion, okay, I move to accept Jian Zhang, I apologize in advance for mispronouncing, as a ninth grade student at Tejado for the FY18 school year, provided he has appropriate, the appropriate visa, allowing him to attend public school for one year with a tuition cost of fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, second.
Add in the second.
Any further discussion?
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Great, nothing else, thank you.
So once again, we've received the student handbook at Tejado, it's a first read, um, does anyone want to make any comments about it, or ask questions? Okay, we'll be voting on that in June. Next up is the regionalization subcommittee update, and Lori, I believe you are the presenter, or the reporter.
I'm allowed to speak now?
You've been scrumming over there.
What?
You've been scrumming.
No, no, I've been trying to fulfill my appropriate role in support of our. It's a pleasure to report on the exploratory process around regionalization, we have presented a charter to the school committee, the school committee approved the charter, we actually made some minor edits to that, we have shared that, along with letters, to town boards of selectmen, finance committees, and planning boards, in closing the charter and seeking members to become part of a, an exploratory committee, we attended our first select board meeting on Monday night, and in Boylston, it was, I think, extremely helpful, it was a very positive conversation, there were some questions asked that were really helpful, there were some observations about how we talk about what we're thinking, and making sure that we really keep a focus on, uh, student achievement and educational purposes in these efforts, um, and, and making sure that we're not over, uh, expressing concerns relative to some of the administrative inefficiencies and, um, financial implications, it actually was really helpful conversation, and it is sort of shaping some of our ongoing communications. The next step in this process is, we have a letter which, um, the school committee has received in your packets, that would be going out to parents, um, thank you to Angela, and to Karen, and to Bob, for offering edits and suggestions, very helpful, um, the goal would be to send those and charters home as soon as we can, um, and that, the purpose of those letters is to recruit parents who might be interested in serving on this exploratory committee, we're looking for two sets of parents from each community. In June, Matt, myself, and Angela will be meeting with faculty during June staff meetings, explaining the process, soliciting feedback, and also inviting members of, of the faculty to join this exploratory committee as well, the first meeting of this group is June 8th at 7:30 here at Tejado, the tentative plan is that the committee would meet monthly, on a schedule to be determined at that meeting, um, we're hoping to hold at least one listening session in each community in June, if possible, I realize that's, it's tight, but, um, that would be our goal, so. I think that's all I have, unless others have comments?
I think it was a very positive response, I think it was surprising, I think we approached this with, this is part of the hearing and listening, is that we approached this, I think from looking at the inefficiencies, and looking at cost savings, and we were concerned approaching the subject that it was going to, those are the things we needed to build off of, and it became very clear and apparent that its educational achievement, which we've provided here at Tejado and accelerated, that's what matters, and it was kind of, it was a reminder of why we're doing this, and I think we all wanted to take that foundation, but we were also concerned about the other pieces, and, um, it was really refreshing. I do have a question, and I don't know if we're allowed, with the documentation, is it, I remember when we did the building committee, who was ongoing, there was a public place to put documentation as it pertains to invitations, letters, the charter itself, would we ever place that on a site, would we put it on the website for?
In the Google Drive.
Communication and like?
Oh, you mean for an anywhere, for the public, sure, yeah, I can go on the school committee website.
Just don't know, it's probably worthwhile, so we, even in a general conversation, we can direct folks.
Yeah, I think as we develop the, um, the committee, the regionalization committee, it would be good to actually, um, identify somebody on that committee that would be responsible to put that stuff onto the site, onto the website, I think that's what they did with the building committee, it was one person, I think that was responsible, Paul, do you remember that at all, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but it was one person on the building committee, I think that was responsible for.
The building committee had access to the, to that particular page.
Yeah, so that's what, I think we would state, and you get the whole crowd of people, identify somebody, and then that person can have the access to the website to put it on there, and we could even do a, we could even do a tab that's just for regionalization committee, just like you had building committee as a tab, you could do the same thing, regionalization committee, so everybody would know that that would be the spot on the website to add.
That's a great idea.
Right, the timeline, all that stuff, yeah, it would be important.
It does remind me that our, I think our school committee tab is just empty right now, so, we probably could address that at the same time, maybe load some info on the other side.
Yep.
Can I add something real quick?
Sure.
As a new member, just sitting in, and attending a couple of discussions, including the proposal to selectmen, um, last night, obviously wording and delivery are gonna be extremely sensitive and important during this, this process, and I think one of the things that should be really heightened sensitivity-wise with the committee, when we involve the, the public, and the other folks, and especially, certain selectmen had a lot of feedback around that particular topic, I would think we should push that particular selectman to be the one to volunteer to join, right, if you, if you have that amount of feedback, I think we should encourage him to be the one who joins us, right, um, so I think, to their suggestion as well, reaching out to other schools, region, systems that have gone through this, I mean, I think that's an area where we really should get some advice on, is, is wording and delivery, I don't even know, I think it's so much wording as it is, you guys are delivering the right agenda, I, I knew what you, but obviously, we're presenting to so many different folks, and you have to get this passed, and through so many different folks to get something like this move along, what everyone hears is totally different, right, so I think, as a group, we need to come together in a great way to be able to deliver something, so everybody hears the same message, and I think that's what Mike Bay was talking about, um, so we should challenge him to be our sounding board, right, so as we deliver this, I think we should push back a little bit, and challenge him, right, because he's gonna be an advocate for us in the community, and, and someone who's gonna have that feedback, so, it's just what I've observed in the two discussions that I've been involved in, is that's gonna be one of our, one of your, our, I don't know, the correct term to use is gonna be, right, so, that's just my observation.
Yeah, I think, uh, that feedback was extremely helpful, because I think we thought we were delivering that as part of our message, and it's, it was not a point of emphasis in his mind, so, it was helpful, and even, I went back and did some work on the parent letter again, too, keeping that in mind, also adding in the fact that somebody made the point that we're already doing this so well at the middle high school level, you know, the students are benefiting from a strong regional system and great collaboration between the two communities, and we really should highlight that, that we're looking to expand that, so that all students benefit, um, in the way that the middle high school students have.
You know, to, to what Angela was pushing in this first discussion, I, the mantra that we're taking the stance that we're doing this as a joint community, and there's no percentages of who does what and more, whether it's financially, educationally, whatever, the fact that we're going into it in a very unified, even front, I think is something that we should focus on, right, it's something that, I think, community-wise, people are gonna read into that, based on that logic, we're really mostly interested in the success of the kids and the education being the last piece of, right, so, I think that's something that we should, it's something that didn't come up in the select, in the selectmen discussion, we didn't, that didn't come up, but I think if it's, it's something that we could lean on to, be part of that.
Yeah, I think we've been trying to mention that, cause we think that's one of the reasons the timing is good for this, one of, a number of reasons, is the fact that this school committee has come together in an amazing way, and I think we mentioned it.
I apologize, if I missed it, I apologize.
You're absolutely right, that it's.
I couldn't actually hear a lot of it that was going on there, so.
I know, somebody that was sitting behind said they didn't hear any.
Well, I had to lean in a lot of it, but.
Ed, you, you have been waiting patiently to make a comment.
Yeah, I, uh, just came kind of in on the back end of this issue, I've been hearing about it, though, from, uh, members of the planning board, other members of my community who are sort of against regionalization, as I understand it, because they're concerned of the different budgets in the different, uh, school districts, and, uh, I just wanna say that some of the people that I'm representing have some doubts, I would like to work on this issue with people, I'd like to consult with you back and forth, and find out some more about it, so I can take something back to them, because, uh, one of the people in the, on my, on the Berlin, uh, financial board believes that, that some of these things can be, uh, gone about another way, so I just wanted to, um, tell you that there are members in Berlin talked about that seem to feel that, number of panels, the financial board, that some of the selectmen might be against this, I, I just wanna sort of be involved in this, so I can kind of bring back, uh, information, as well as forward information to you.
Sure.
And I think it's safe to say that we know that there are community members in both communities, Boylston alike, that for us blushes, there's this caution, there's concern, there's questions, and I think we, we know, we are entering this willingly, with that expectation, knowing that it's not gonna satisfy everybody, uh, we're knowing that you're not gonna get a hundred percent approval, it would be wonderful, and we always get surprised by how supportive both communities end up being, when we think there's doubt, when we think there's concern, once we are able to, in a positive fashion, articulate what we're trying to do, what the ultimate outcome and benefit is for all parties, specifically the kids, that we find that everyone's sort of embraces and comes around, but yet, there is, we know that there's gonna be some.
Okay.
Some points in this process that we have to, you know, we have to risk, that's why we're gonna hold listening sessions, that's why we're gonna make this a public discussion, it has to be.
Absolutely, and that, you know, that's part of our, our mission, not only the, um, listening sessions that will occur relatively soon, is to get that initial reservation, initial concerns, that's part of the committee's job, to look at those concerns, explore them, see if they're legitimate concerns, if can they be rectified at all, that's part of the task of the regional subcommittee, I mean, this regional subcommittee, committee, rather, and the other thing, too, is we want all sorts of voices on the committee, it's a very large committee, but we don't want the committee to be all made up of, yay, let's do this, we want to hear, um, all perspectives throughout the whole process, and, and particularly at the beginning, the better, that's kind of our purpose, is to really kind of flush out and give people a chance to tell us what their concerns or reservations are, if they have some, and also their feedback and support, too, that's, cause ultimately, this does come down to the towns, and we, this is our sense that we need to know the town in general, and specifically.
I would encourage those folks to participate, right, that's what I would do, I would, to, to some of the folks in selectmen, to, that's where you encourage those folks to participate, right, to your point, those are the folks you want to be part of that discussion.
The only little tidbit that I would add, and I'm not even sure it's profound at all, but, in my conversations with the people I encounter in Berlin, um, it would appear that there's a lot of education to go on, even about what regionalization is, I, I find a little surprising, given that we have a regional middle high school, and there are people who actually say to me, I don't even know what that means, um, and so, there is, I think there's an education piece, um, that, that's really important to put out there, so.
It's interesting you say that, because one of Angela's set of edits on the parent letter was to really lay out in very clear terms what the current structure is.
Yeah.
Because we really think some people don't necessarily understand how it currently is structured and how it works, so.
And some people, too, are looking at, just from a financial point of view, I mean, the thing is, too, that I wanna get their voices out there, um, and I'll encourage those people to come here, that meeting is what, next week, I believe, but?
The first meet, the listening session hasn't been scheduled yet, the first meeting of the committee is June, but the goal would be later that month, to have a listening session in Berlin.
Okay.
And I would echo what people have been saying. And I would echo what people have been saying here, we're really interested in hearing from people who have concerns, as well as people who maybe have questions, don't understand it, or people who are supportive. We recognize that this is a process. I think the other thing to point out is, we've been embarked on this conversation for three years. And we've had a couple of feasibility studies, and we've moved very slowly and very cautiously. Because I don't think we felt that there's, there was clear information, evidence, or we were at a definitive point, that this is what we need to do. I think where we are today is realizing, we wanna invite the communities to be a part of this process in determining, is this the best course of action?
Sure. Right, that's the other thing I forgot to add, with this subcommittee, after we do some, really delve in, it's really kind of, this committee will determine if they want to go forward or not.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary, I'd like to compliment the committee, and your work has been prodigious, and you've done a great job with it, so. Yeah, you've done a lot. You've done a lot, and I wanna congratulate you on that. And you represent the school district well. I wanna congratulate you on that.
They did a great job last night.
Yeah. I'm sure they did. I have no doubt in this. I have complete faith in the three of them. Lori, you're up again.
Are you sick of me yet?
Never.
I have the great task of sharing information about the evaluation of the superintendent. Paul is, oh, you're so good, Paul.
Sometimes. I'll be your clicker.
Oh, you will? Okay, great.
You have to make the noise. I'm gonna get it. I'm gonna bring in my dog clicker.
So, to begin with, every year, an important role of the school committee is to conduct an evaluation of the superintendent. This year, we received five responses from the committee of six, and it's really a pleasure for me to share these results with you. Click. The first thing I wanna, that actually says summary, it's not all showing for some reason.
Is that like, is that tall?
I was struck as I was compiling these results and looking at the summaries, I was struck by the fact that, and so it motivated me to actually count every single response from five people. There were 155 responses from the five people, so it's a fairly significant kind of document. Of those 155 responses, 78% were exemplary. That's just extraordinary to me. Oh, can you go back? I didn't say click. And 22% were proficient. Now proficient is sort of good, you know? It's like, hey, you met it, you know, you're doing good. So, and nothing was below proficient. So click. There's a section that talks about progress towards goals, and those goals are categorized in three areas. In the area of professional practice, all five of the respondents indicated that Nadine had exceeded their goal. In student learning, three said she had exceeded, two said she met the goal. Again, no response lower than meet the goal or was proficient in any question. In district improvement, three exceed, two met. Exceeded, two met. Forgive my grammar there, I'm so sorry. That was an inconsistency.
You lost the parallel.
Key strengths, commitment to high standards, data informed decision making, communication, addressing family concerns, and fiscal systems and budgeting, which is a really cool one because a few years ago, it actually was an area that we recommended was not a strength, and tremendous efforts have gone into that, as well as she now has Bob too, so that helps too, right? An area that might be worthy of more focus is social and emotional learning. And that comment is really maybe just a reflection of not having enough information on, there was reference to the areas below, and then I didn't see anything below. So, we, I felt like maybe we didn't have enough information to judge this well. It also is an area that every school system struggles with. How do you best support the social and emotional learning needs of the students? So that's an area for the future. Click. I wanna share some of the comments. These are verbatim comments from five school committee members. The first one is, the superintendent is an outstanding leader and the perfect person to have in place in the Berlin-Boylston district at this time. She's forward thinking, relentlessly driven to improve, and devoted to continuous learning, and caring, and compassionate. Ms. Ekstrom is an exemplary superintendent. As she contemplates her fifth year with the Berlin-Boylston Public Schools, our districts have benefited from her constant pursuit of excellence and steadfast nature. The districts have thrived from having longevity with a dedicated leader and a committed administrative team. Standardized test scores have improved, and the percentage of local students who attend our public schools is increasing. Click. Click!
I said clip, sorry.
Nadine continues to grow as an asset to our school districts and to the towns of Berlin and Boylston, and her influence continues to drive outstanding educational opportunities for our students. Our schools are in a very, very different place than they were at the start of her tenure with us, greatly benefiting everyone in the school community. The superintendent is most effective in improving student learning when she both inspires and challenges teachers and administrators to be better. This is a delicate balance, inspire and challenge, and not everyone is interested in or willing to be inspired or challenged, especially in a system that for reasons I don't quite understand, leans toward being smug about student achievement. Kind of an interesting comment, there's, there's a bit going on there, but it is a delicate balance, isn't it? Click. Click.
He did.
I did.
Oh, sorry. Nadine, you have established high standards and a methodology for measuring progress. The benefits of assessment tools come through when you and your team are making decisions related to student learning and related areas of focus. This was very apparent in the presentation to school committee on student growth, comparative measures, and the discussion of future plans. It's good to see these as fact-based discussions supported by data. Nadine continues to improve the annual budget process, emphasizing early and consistent communication with municipal representatives to achieve the best possible support for the school district's needs. Considering the difficulty of maintaining educational programs and quality in an ever tightening fiscal environment, this is a substantial feat. Click. Family and community engagement continues to be one of Nadine's strengths, ensuring excellent communication with the school committee and maintaining an encouraging, welcoming, open door policy. Her involvement to assist in issue resolution is impressive, demonstrating an extraordinary level of personal attention that is appreciated in difficult situations and helps us to maintain a desirable small-town feel. That's so cool. Overall summative performance, this is kind of a summary that it rolls up to on the document, and the overall rating of five school committee members was exemplary. And her impact on student learning and the choices were low, medium, high, her impact on student learning is high. So, kudos and congrats on a really strong evaluation and an excellent performance. I also wanna say congratulations to the leadership team. We know that Nadine doesn't do any of this alone, and you guys deserve tremendous credit for the work that's happening in the schools. I also wanna thank the faculty, who live the vision every day, and who are always demonstrating how much they care about the students as well. It's an honor and a privilege for us to work with you and with your leadership team, so thank you.
Wow. Thank you very much. If I could.
You may.
It's, it's always hard to hear things, good or bad, it's, it's just always just humbling, I think, from speechless a little bit. I know, even though I was able to read some of this ahead of time, it's still, it's about me. I just, I really just wanna say, first of all, thank you to the school committee, because it really takes a good, solid school committee to work together that makes us really enjoy getting up every day and getting to our jobs that are not easy. And I say us as a, as a team, because I do always try to talk about the success that you see at the school, it's because of, of the team effort, never with I. But I do wanna say that I have an awesome team, and that starts at the school committee, to the administration, our teachers have just been great, they're wonderful to work with. Can't do it without this guy right here next to me too, so we're great to have him as an add-on with my financial, fiscal, he's, he made me look good this year. But anyway, I think everybody really puts a lot of effort into the school. I know for myself personally, I think of everybody's children, and I say there are children, whether they're school choice or they're residents, and every one of them are very important to me personally, as well as professionally. So I see, I get excited every day that I can go into a classroom and I can see the children learning, every day that I can go in and you see that, and you all know what I'm talking about, that aha moment when it clicks. I just see one of those, and that makes my day. I love to start my weeks on Mondays going into schools, because that's what we're here for, and that's what grounds me for the rest of the week. So I take pride in the school system, I take pride in announcing that the school committee that I have, and my administration. Sometimes we've gone, and just recently even Carol and I were just talking about how we've gone to some trainings or whatever recently, and they refer to Berlin and Boylston, we're really humbled by that, because it's, it's great to hear that we've been seen as examples in the state for various reasons. But I, you know, I've been able to take my time this year as well to just look at and assess myself personally and professionally, and to actually, I've actually said, wow, I've been here for five years, and look at where we've come. And I, and I say we, where we've come, but I've also seen my own growth, and a couple of times, just recently with some of my admin team, I've talked about how I've seen myself change as an administrator for the positive, and it's, it's the changes that are made through the feedback and the reflections that I also get back. To me, I value those, and I value everybody. So I look forward to continuing my tenure here, and I'm excited about the potential and the changes that we have coming forward. And I'm glad that what you recognized is what we as a team have already recognized in regards to the social emotional learning. In fact, John, Ace, Carol, and myself, we went to an elementary school today to look at their social emotional, their curriculum that they use, and we brought some teachers with us as well from each school to look at that social emotional program and curriculum. We have a virtual, which will be kinda cool, Paul's gonna set up for us in our room tomorrow, hopefully if everything goes well, right? We have a virtual tour of another school with a different program. Carol and I spoke this afternoon about the middle and high school, and how we can incorporate that program. So that is our main focus for next year. We've got a couple of focus for next year, the social emotional learning is definitely our top. Civics, how we can authentically bring civics into our classrooms, and civic learning and experiences authentically, and listening to the school today that we've been visited, they actually use a social curriculum that focuses on empathy, and they gear it towards physics. So I can see how we can tie those together, it was very cool to see that today. And then also inclusive, inclusive schools, and what does inclusive schools mean? And not just special education inclusive schools, but community-based inclusive schools, and how we can continue to build our community partnerships in a variety of settings, whether it's with other schools, small businesses, colleges, universities, and how we can continue to build that. So I think that all ties in, if we can build a community and continue to support each other, then our social emotional issues also start to increase, so. So I thank you, and I commend you for all of your work that you also have done, and we have a big road ahead of you in regards to this regionalization, and I'm looking forward to being a part of those discussions and seeing where those concerns are coming from and so forth, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you Lori, for doing an outstanding job, you pulling it out altogether and doing a slide presentation.
Woo-hoo!
You really set the bar high. I think I'm gonna give up my chairmanship.
Don't do that.
The next item on our agenda is a point in the program where we reaffirm our norms and standards as a school committee.
My policy, even, if you can, if you wanna listen to the evaluation.
Very supportive.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask them, is this the same person you see at home?
You could, and you didn't ask.
They ran quickly.
Yeah, they ran very quick.
They didn't see you all.
Yeah, I can't find it in my pile stuff.
Policy BDA is actually the school committee norms and standards. And each year, they, you review, you review them, but you also sign to an agreement that you're going to abide by this policy. So this actually would be signed by, it's not a vote, it's just a fact that you're just reaffirming, and I believe it should be in that packet that I sent around.
It is.
Basically stating that you're going to re, to abide by that policy, which is, includes your norms and standards. So that's what that is.
Okay, that's great. Anyone have any questions about that before you see it and sign it?
The only, I just a comment.
You can be the last one to sign it, Carol.
Oh, I'm the last one to sign it, okay.
There's also something for you to initial in here as well.
Thank you Angela.
Just a comment on that, as I reread those norms and standards, and really probably back a few years before we, you know, when we first started the district governance project, and I really think that some of those standards today, we probably wanna modify that this summer, because some of it just seems, I don't wanna say unnecessary, but some of them, I think we're coming from a place of concern that are people gonna work together, are people gonna represent the committee in a positive way? And I think that this group has really proven itself in that way. So we might wanna modify some.
So Lori, that actually brings up a good piece, and I know your governance project workshop dates is a little bit later in the agenda, but that's how these came up, through that policy workshop, so, I mean, through the governance workshops. So you might break forward, and at that time, you have those open discussions and a workshop with Dorothy Presson.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. We set to move on to dates? Okay. Did anyone, I don't quite know what to do with this, other than to say, do we wanna vote on it? Do we wanna talk about it? What is it we wanna do with this?
So just for the new people, if I could.
Please.
For the new people that are on the school committee, we always have one meeting a month as a minimum, and then you'll see on the region, the region of their stars, because those are on, those are an additional meeting, a second meeting of the month if needed. On those second meetings of the month, we would not be asking any of the administrative team to have to be present typically, except it might just be me and Bob, because it would be more or less business items and so forth. But the other members, I would not be asking them to, I'll be there for that, it's just for the region. And so, we haven't really had to use those this year, those are the as needed. Also, the seven o'clock time slot, we have started school committees, I believe as early as six, obviously. We started them as late as 7:15, 7:30, I think, last year, and that was actually because of my schedule, because I had courses. of my schedule, because I had courses on those Tuesday evenings, and that I wouldn't be able to get here any earlier than that, but we wanted to stay true to the Tuesday. I think it's important for School Committee to remember that when your day is set, we asked PTOs and CPAC and everybody else to not have meetings on those days, so they actually have shifted their dates to other days during the week, knowing the School Committee typically meets on a Tuesday. So, you know, in regards to the schedule and the time, I guess you'd want to just ask each other if you wanted to keep the time at 7:00. Last year, we had tried to go a little bit earlier, but Larry was on the board and you couldn't go earlier than 7:00. The December 1 is the, the December 19th, that actually was moved to the 19th, because the week before that is a Jewish holiday, so we're trying to be respectful of the holiday, so we moved it to December 19th. Otherwise, they're typically the, you know...
Is that calendar wrong to drive?
Yes, it is.
Yep.
What does it need? Does anybody know?
Anticipated 2017.
It's to the end of the packet.
-2018.
So, the proposal is to meet on Tuesdays at 7:00.
Got it?
Ready?
Yep.
I'm curious if people would be able to or be interested in meeting earlier.
I'm available earlier.
I'm available earlier.
I am too.
I actually showed up at 6:00 today anyway.
I ate no dinner, I flew down here, and then I turned around and went home.
Well, that's awesome.
I think 6:30 would be good, if Matt can do it, only because I, because the admin team was here all day, makes it easier for them, but also hopefully late enough that our presenters, who have to wait for the other staffs to get home from work, can make it too. I know we could always accommodate them at a different point in the agenda, but I don't know, 6:30 is pushing it.
No, I mean, I was laughing to say what I'm going to be doing on September 12th. 6:00 sounds fine to me, I don't know.
Okay, do we have a consensus then around 6:30? Seems we do. All right. So do we have to have a formal vote?
Nope.
I just have to mention that I will not be able to attend the first meeting.
You're already blowing my mind.
Where are you going to be?
August 29th, I'll be in Copenhagen.
I had to be somewhere next to me.
Yeah, well.
Wait, so who's the vice chair? Okay. Great.
Awesome, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the MASC self-evaluation, and Angela would like to explain?
This is something that we do typically every year. I didn't ask for them to be collected, I never turned one in myself, so...
Yeah, I think this was my failure, frankly, one of many, but Matt was kind enough to forward the document to us, I think, during a meeting.
Yes.
And then I never followed up to ask people to submit them. So, one of my thoughts is, if we could do them before our District Governance process, that would be helpful, to have that information. I can send it again from...
Please do.
It's in the packet.
Could we set it, could we set the deadline though, of like by the next meeting? I mean, give us a month to do it.
And it only takes a few minutes, truly.
So if we could set that, have them in hand by the next meeting?
Yep.
I'm always better with a firm date than a vague date. It's my personal learning style. Okay, so, the MASC District Governance Support Project Workshop dates.
Can I just confirm, we're going to send them to you right?
Yes, you're going to send them to me.
And those are located?
Who's going to send them?
It's on the drive.
Building what?
It is on the shared drive.
Oh, it's on the shared drive?
It's on the shared drive.
Thank you, Matt.
Is it in its own place, or is it...
It's actually under the May 23 meeting, under XV11-4-C, School Committee Self-Evaluation.
So just download that.
There it is, right on my face.
Right there.
Right there!
Here it is.
Okay, great.
Do we expect our new members?
I don't think they have to evaluate themselves yet.
No, no, they have not, I can tell you that.
I would read it, you had certain comments about school enroll.
I love to talk for myself.
When we originally started doing this, actually, was when we had the Governance Project last time, and Dorothy Presser had asked that prior to the first workshop that you actually did this, and she put them all together as a summary. So it's typically your practice, so it'd probably be good to do this right before the workshop, so that we can give that to her.
Well, we'll have it by the next meeting, because I'm going to send them to me by then. Okay, that's great. So now we're going to talk about the Governance Support Project. I don't mind saying something about this. We were, as a, believe it or not, I'm a relatively new School Committee member, as it turns out, and I kept hearing about the Governance Project, Governance Project, because Lori was always referring to it, Angela referred to it, people were like, what? That's the Governance Project.
Wow, we were obnoxious that bit.
No, it sounded like important, important work, but I didn't know anything about it. So actually, when we were at the Dan Hill, Nadine and I were talking about the Governance Project, that's making my pitch, that I thought it'd be good to do it again, because we have so many new committee members. I believe Matt probably didn't participate in the Governance Project either, right? Because you came after me.
Not that far after me.
Yes, okay.
Days.
Days, moments, hours. And Dorothy Presser happened to be standing there. So Nadine, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, well Dorothy Presser was, actually, had just talked to us, and she had said, oh, I got your, you know, the information that you're interested in doing the Governance Project again, she's very interested, she's available pretty much any evening in July and August, except for July 18th and 19th. She can do Saturday Workshops if you're thinking of doing a Saturday Workshop instead. The only time she can be available is July 29th, other than that, pretty much she'd be open to it. We did, they would usually, we stayed true to two hours, so the Workshops would be, you know, we did it at 7:00 to 9:00, or 6:00 to 8:00, or 5:00 to 7:00, whatever, for two hours. You started with your self-assessment of where you wanted to go, where you saw things were concerning, or what you hoped to achieve out of the Governance Project. And I think there's a lot that's changed here as a school community, that it would be good to just, even to just get some refreshers of roles of Superintendent versus School Committee, and where do those lines cross, and where do they, should they not cross, in regards to from ed reform. And I think that's what really helped, I know it helped me even when I was working at Gilmonahue, as the Superintendent out there, we did the Governance Project, and it really helped, because a lot of ed reform, they never kind of got their message in some cases about where those roles started and ended, and I think it helped to give them some structure as a beginning for them to be able to do some of the turning around that they needed. And here, when we did it the first time, we didn't even have, I came in and there was no mission statement, there were no goals, there was no direction to go by, so I kind of had to pull from somewhere to get something moving forward. Everybody, each school was working in their own direction and everything, so the committees were working as separate entities, you know, rather than trying to work together. So, you know, that's, that's pretty much where it is, so, you know, there's a lot of flexibility in the Governance Project of what you hope to accomplish and what you hope to do, and I think probably just starting with an opening of your self-assessment and, you know, maybe even redefining or identifying those roles and responsibility, might be a good way to start, and then she can move from there.
Absolutely.
So I think what we'd have to do is get some ideas of dates, so that we can give back to Dorothy. So I don't know if everybody wants to look at their calendars now availability and pick, you know, maybe give two or three dates.
Maybe it'd be good to do a Tuesday evening, since we do Tuesdays anyways. Oh, no.
No.
We can't, we're doing something else.
Although I'm hoping we're all done.
Well, hope springs to tears.
Well, you have a tentative Regional School Committee meeting, June 20th, since that's already in your calendar, you could probably propose that one.
Ah, yeah, why not?
Yeah, that's always good.
How many of the dates do we need?
I think if you give her three options, she'll pick one to start.
Okay.
But her message almost sounded like she was wide open, other than a couple...
That was back in May 10th, so that was, you know, almost two weeks ago, so I don't know where she is at this point.
Well, we're going to get into people's vacations, I'm sure, in July.
July 11th?
About July 11th. Never goes as easily, what's wrong?
7:00 AM, we're talking, please. Yep. Tuesday, July 25th?
I will be away.
Tuesday, August 1st?
It's okay by me.
I will be away.
I'll be away. Okay. Let's go through the Tuesdays, August 8th. We have a winner, August 8th.
That's okay.
No, not a winner?
It's a long day for me, but that's fine. Yep.
So we guarantee her three dates, June 20th, July 11th, and August 8th.
All right, I'll send the, I'll have Carol send those to Dorothy.
Great, thank you.
Just have the A to be like a last choice, you know.
We have our administrative retreat, obviously, 9th and 10th, so by the time the end of the day, we're all kind of looking at each other little cross-eyed.
Cancel classes, we have a Can Jam.
Ice cream.
I'll have a Can Jam. No.
If you're all feeling that way.
Imagine where?
Maybe the word retreat's not the right word.
Let's not ask the...
Not August 1st, August 8th.
I'll call them later.
But that's a third choice, so there's three different dates.
All right, so, School Committee members, do we have any comments or any future agenda items?
None of this.
Okay, hearing none?
I'm sorry, can I ask this question?
Yes, sure.
It's for a recognition.
The 20 something.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the school website.
So, do we have a need for executive session?
Yep. So what I need is, we have two executive sessions this evening. We have the Berlin-Boylston Regional Union 60 Executive Session, and then we also have the Berlin Memorial, Berlin will reopen, but the region will not. So what we need is, do you want me to give the motion?
I would like the legal language, right, please?
I would give you, for the Berlin-Boylston Regional Union 60 School Committee, let's move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and not to reconvene in open session.
So moved. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Is this a poll question? Okay, it's a roll call. All right, Matt?
Aye.
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 And aye here, so...
And we need the Chair to declare that an executive session is necessary to protect the bargaining litigation position of the body.
Yes, I do declare that.
I'll give you the language tab. You and me, we'll talk. Okay. And then for Berlin, we need the Berlin School Committee to move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to reconvene in open session.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, roll call, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Done with that, so...
Cancel, or call the...
John Stain.
So...
Diane and Carol, can we just...
Do I have to motion to close my...
I'll do yours.
I'd like to make him, do you close the Berlin School Committee?
Session?
Go with that.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, we're not all...
I'm here for the, the regional.